We did.
America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go to approval of the agenda. I'll have a first and a second, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Then it's approved. Citizens comments? You have any comments tonight? Thanks, Jamie. Thank you. Go to approval in minutes from the September 11th, 2018, regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then it's approved. Moving to old business, item one. Western Woods subdivision, phase four, request for subdivision acceptance and reduction to a maintenance bond, thirty-eight lots on 5.9 acres located along Wiley Circle, Spicer Court, and Cole Quit Way, property zone RS-5 PUD. So we'll go to the staff for just an update on that there.
I spoke to the developer who's actually out of town and the city manager that if you recall, a couple of months ago, there was discussion about this and they are supposed to be working together to achieve some remedies to mostly to the drainage. I don't think any of that has actually happened yet from based on the discussion I had with both parties, but they're supposed to be working on it, so that's really all that I'm aware of at this point.
Thank you. Do we have any feedback from the citizens that came out? Have they been addressed or if they've been?
Honestly, no, I have not been contacted, which makes me feel somewhat hopeful that when I spoke to the developer, he told me that he and the builder, Old South, had worked with the community, working on that punch list of various items, and I know that they had stabilized some of the ditches and done some clean-out work, some matting, so I haven't heard anything from, and there were some very dedicated people that came to several meetings to voice their concerns, and I haven't heard from them, so I.
Hopeful.
Yeah, hopeful.
Could we get something like those that spoke, I know not everybody spoke, so you may not know everybody, but can we at least contact those that spoke out and follow up on whether everything was done? And then also, I'd like to make a motion to defer it since we're still don't have any more information on resolving the drainage issue.
May I have a first?
We really need to do this.
Second.
Yeah, we need to have a second, yeah.
Second. Mr. Burks, Mr. Burks?
You have a discussion?
I do, Mr. Chairperson.
Sir.
I spoke with the city manager earlier today about this. The developer apparently has tried to reach the landowner, Mr. Collins has tried to reach the landowner, neither one of them gotten any return responses as of yet. Also, I know Mr. Collins went out and walked the site some. It seems like what might have to happen is that pond will have to be raised. Instead of trying to raise that outlet, it's just actually raise the level of the pond so that it'll drain directly into it and it will dry out. At that point, they can get in there and try to mow as necessary in those things. In addition to that would be getting obviously onto the private property and doing some work with the drainage on that side as well, but there's seven issues apparently getting a hold of the landowner.
If you raise that pond, then you have an issue with the drainage.
That may be an issue, they're gonna have to do some technical work to see what it's gonna be.
And just to play devil's advocate, I think that technically it's installed as intended, as designed, you know, I think the city had an overall vision to create its own retention pond around that main street eventually to where several areas would run to the city's addition, so just to kinda, you know, give some backlog on it too.
Well, one of the things is, and I've been back on that property, I was probably trespassing when I was on some places back there because after it crosses Wiley Circle there, a lot of the reason it's not draining is because of when they built the subdivision. If you go back there, I mean, that little ditch or little drainage is full of red clay, and that came from the repeated times that it ran off of those lots. I mean, I know that Mr. Jenkins also lives in that subdivisions in there a lot, there was times when there would be three and four inches of mud on the road out there, and that wasn't once in a while, that was regular. And so they've sort of filled up their own ditch by not keeping the water in there. I know we're gonna be voting for a deferral, and I would like that just because we was told in this meeting that some things would be done, and evidently we're still working on them. So until the, whether the city needs to make a move or the developer or who, somebody needs to do something, because raising the pond or whatever, unless we buy, unless the city buys some property across the street to put this retention pond in, and I don't feel like those people are ready to sell their property yet, I know they've had several offers on that property and they've not sold it, so I think that's gonna have to be addressed. I mean, when it rains, there's still water and a lot of times it crosses and it floods the street down there. But otherwise, I did notice that the subdivision looks a lot nicer, they have cleaned up the ditches, they've got grass growing in places it was bare, so they have resolved some issues, but the biggest issue I think is the drainage, and I think that really does need to be addressed, and filling up a pond is not, filling up a retention pond is not going to make the problem go away, I think it'd probably make it worse.
Well, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I'm kinda at the point of until somebody comes back, either the citizens or the, you know, developer or even the city manager gives us some kind of written, you know, recommendation of what's been done or, you know, what he's done to try to get a hold of, then I just say we need to defer it again because, you know, it was what was determined at the meeting, so I, you know, kinda agree on that point.
I think the developer wanted to be here, but he was out of town from the staff notes.
So we have a first and a second, motion for deferment? Any additional discussion, Mr. Harrison? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Carries. All right, item two, old business, preliminary plat development plan, Otter Creek Estates, five proposed lots on 8.8 acres, property located at 7329 Taylor Road, tax map 42, parcel 77, RS 40, single-family residential zoning district, property owned by Tony Cavender. Staff comments, all technical items have been addressed at this time. This is the one we saw last month, it didn't have the full 150-foot width on the lots, and they've lost a lot now. And they do capture the 150-foot width, is that correct? First. Second. Additional discussion?
Do we have any engineer? No.
No staff comment.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New business, number three, recommendation to the board of commissioners on the rezoning of property and approval of preliminary master development plan for Richland Estates, requested by Tony Cavender, 141 proposed lots on 111 acres, property located along Cox Pike, tax map 43, parcel 23, current zoning district RS 40, proposed zoning district R-20 PUD. Mr. Jenkins, if you could read those staff comments for me, please.
This item was deferred at the May 8th, 2018 planning commission meeting to allow for more adequate review time. Before the vote for deferral, the planning commission requests the middle of a traffic study to include the Cox Pike, Hall Lane, Dice Lamplie, and Highway 100 intersections. Additional discussion included perimeter buffers between stable acres, Lincoln Park, aesthetic characteristics of the proposed houses to be constructed, and emergency access. At this time, planning and engineering staff have the following additional comments. Number one, submitted paper copy does not match the PDF, does not include the word "PUD." Number two, there is no improved open space shown per Article 8, Tac 207.6, excuse me, of the zoning ordinance, which requires a minimum of 5% of gross area to be dedicated to improved open space, which would be five and a half acres in this instance. Number three, no design details or pattern booklet indicating character of the development was submitted. Number four, emergency access point in the northeast corner should have more detail, for example, improved paved, et cetera. Number five, per the traffic study, site distance triangles must be assessed, which may reveal the need for left or right turn lanes on Cox Pike. Number six, in agreement with item two of the conclusions and recommendations of the traffic study, there is some concern regarding the close proximity of the proposed entrance along Cox Pike to the existing entrance of Hall Lane. And finally, number seven, stream crossing will require TDEC and/or federal agency approval.
Sir?
I'd move to open discussion.
For motion to open discussion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I wanna start out, if you don't, can I have a?
Absolutely.
If you would go ahead and join us, are the recommendations that staff have laid out, are those something that we can do, like especially the open space?
Yes, ma'am, I mean, we've got almost 20 acres of open space, 20%, almost of that, and that's not including the step system, but it's a large part of that, but I think what we were trying to do and is not the necessarily with the PUD, R-20 PUD, we were trying to go straight R-15, R-20, still do a lot less lots than the R-20, like we had last time, we had 165, we're only doing 141 now, but if you look at the base zone density that we calculated based on R-20, at 2.2 units an acre, we come up with 244 lots. So here, we're only asking for 141 lots, but R-15 and R-20, along with 20% open space, but we would like to stay away from the PUD definition. We're gonna do nice homes here, they're gonna be $300,000, $400,000 brick, all brick homes, we're gonna do a nice entrance up front, we're going, we're assuming that we're gonna have to put a left turn lane in on Cox Pike, I haven't done the traffic, the site distances and stuff yet, but we've calculated that we will put that in if need be. The private drive, we've made, or not the private drive, the second emergency access up there in the far right-hand corner, we had talked about, and I had mentioned it a little bit with Will, but that's during the design type phase there, but just for emergency vehicles to get out, we was gonna do a, we're proposing to do a nice fence around that with crash gates up there only. We want everybody to stem and shoot out this subdivision out to Cox Pike, not just shoot out to Lake Road, that just being emergency access if there's a flood or fire or something at the front where emergency vehicles can get in off Lake Road. And that second entrance off Lake Road also allowed us to get the water line looped in that whole area to get that pressure back up, because it lacked pressure in that area, because we get to go onto Lake Road and loop that water line through there, that actually bumps the water pressure up in that area too, but. And we, and from, per that last meeting where we had lots up there in that far top left-hand corner, we put all the step system, so all that'll be just open green grass fields, and along the whole western boundary there, we've got, we're keep, trying to keep that natural tree buffer and keeping that creek there, and I'm backing up all the lots too there, so we're staying off of basically everything on that left-hand side there if you look at that drawing. We were, you know, like, Mary, like you said last time, you were worried about those larger homes up there in that area, so we've left it all open space and step system up in there, so no homes up in there, other than that one little cul-de-sac that crosses over that's still got a large amount of open space between that. But.
Just to be perfectly clear, I don't think the question is in regards to open space in general, it's just improved open space. So regulations required is five and a half acres in this situation, so 5%.
If you do a PUD, correct?
Yeah, and according to the PDF I have before me, it says Richland Estates R-20 PUD, is that correct?
Well, I've submitted one that says R-15, R-20 on it also, after the fact, that we're not doing, we're suggesting, if, okay, do, we would like to get away from the PUD connotation and do R-15, R-20 lots.
Is your goal gonna have two different parcels?
Yeah, yeah, we'll have some lots, there's a lot of lots in there, there still are that are 20,000 square feet, but they're 75 feet wide, you know what I mean?
It doesn't show that division, I guess, on our, what we have, doesn't show the division of those two parcels.
Didn't show the, what do you mean?
You're not showing your boundary line of where that, because there're gonna be two separate parts.
No, no, sir, it's, you're gonna have R-15, R-20 through the entire development, and that's, I've got a table to the right that's got a delineation of all the lot areas, nothing's left than 15, but most of them are all around 17,000 to 20,000 square feet.
Are you trying to paint where bottom side, R-20, top side, R-15?
Well, I'm trying to, it's just, if you look at that subdivision, before we started working on it, we did an HD report on it, determined what the creeks and streams and stuff like that are, so if you look at it, there's like four streams that's kinda dissecting that piece of property. So in order to keep the number of lots up, not, you know, like last time we lost 20 something lots, just kinda misogyn those through the HD report, was to keep the same feel, but do R-15 and R-20 lots throughout the thing, you know, based on the creek, so if you go...
And that would be a PUD, right?
Not necessarily, I'd rather keep, if the PUD...
Or an R-15 standalone?
Correct, R-15 slash R-20, you know, I've got probably more than half is R-20 lots, other half is R-15 lots, is our goal.
I think, I think we're all just so confused of what's coming to us.
I'm sorry.
Do we have an R-15, R-20 zoning district, or would they go to a PUD or a standalone R-15 if we have a standalone R-15 district?
Yeah, so there's, there's a challenge here on kinda the, the process of accomplishing what's being desired and not classifying it as a planned development. If, if, if there was a desire to go with a straight R-15 and R-20 zoning district, there'd have to be a clear delineation between the area that would be R-20 and the area that would be R-15. And I think, Mr. Reed, I think there's an opportunity to possibly do that, as it appears that almost everything, I assume north is up, let's see, yeah, so everything southwest of Lot 77 and Lot 15 appears to be like within either 20,000 or greater, or within about 500 or 600 square feet of being 20,000. And then everything north of Lots 15 and 77, those appear to be in that 15,000 to 17,000 square foot range. So, you know, there may be an opportunity to, in essence, in essence, you're creating two different subdivisions, one that's zoned R-20 and one that's zoned R-15, and that could potentially be accomplished. The challenge with that is that with straight zoning, there is no requirement for a master plan of any type, and so the request and the rezoning would be just to rezone an area that would be defined as that entire area as RS-15 without any ties of this specific layout. And that's where the planned development part comes in, in that the master plan for a PUD ties the zoning to that specific layout, so that's kinda the challenge that I guess is, that we're trying to navigate through. That, does that clarify some?
If there's a standalone R-15, could the whole thing not just be R-15?
That's what I was gonna say, 'cause if you did R-15, knowing that I'm gonna keep these same square footages, I'm not gonna go to the same number of lots, 141, but just go R-15.
I think just the biggest, is I think we received several different documents, and then your applications had PUD, and when we sat down and staffed for you last week, our digital was different than our print.
That's probably my fault, because I didn't, I didn't meet with everybody, I met with Scott, and then Tony met with them, and then I didn't meet with Christine, it's, I mean, which, kinda as far as coordinating, we were spitballing different ideas. Scott seemed to think we could do the R-20 and R-15, but then that's what I'm hearing from, you know, Will and Christine, so I'm, I'm just, our goal is to just basically do the, what you see here at R-15 if we're allowed, but to keep the same square footages that you see, which are most of them 17,000 to 20,000 square feet.
So our staff reviewed it as a PUD, I don't know if we, if it's better to say it needs to be resmitted as an R-15 and let you guys review it from that perspective, so then it truly is coming in here as an R-15 and not a PUD kinda, but we're gonna change it right before we sit down tonight, just?
Well, again, just to, I wanna reiterate, if something such as this came through as a rezoning to an RS-15.
It wouldn't have to have the drawing.
There's nothing that ties this layout to that zoning. So, not to say that Mr. Cavender wouldn't honor this, but if a downturn occur, if you rezone it to RS-15, a downturn occurs and he sells it, it's still RS-15, and that new owner could come in and redesign whatever they wanted to, as long as they were 15,000 square foot lots. Now, there's some practical limitations, and those, that practical limitation is two things, one, the streams as Jamie was talking about, and the soils as well, so there are some real-life, on-the-ground limitations that are going to prevent this piece of property from having a density that is just grossly greater than what you're seeing before you tonight. So I'm not, in that regard, I have some assurances that this specific piece of property wouldn't, you wouldn't see 250 houses as, you know, the R-20 might allow, but without a planned development, that's where kind of our, your assurance comes into play with the planned overlay, so.
I kinda, me personally, I think if we did allow a multi-use, it would have to be a PUD, I don't think we have any way around that, I think it's kinda dangerous.
But if it's, if it's an R-15, it means all the lots would be over 15,000 square feet, so it would suffice.
But also, I worry about not putting a R-15 right now, 'cause I still have the same concerns about the homes, there's a lot of homes in that area, and wanting to keep them, especially even though we have this lovely green space and, and there's blockers, but, you know, just since there are so many small subdivisions right there, keeping them kinda similar. But another thing, and I know the traffic study will, will be able to determine all of this, but it is kinda a dangerous spot coming into the neighborhood, so, you know, I would wanna make sure that we had.
Turn lane.
Yeah.
Well, that's, and that's what I said up front.
And I'm sure they're gonna call for that, but.
Well, she, they want us to do site triangles, that's what I was telling Will, y'all, earlier, we're assuming already that we're gonna have to put a left turn lane without even doing the triangles there, so, yeah, I agree 100%, but, you know, we, like I said, Tony's, they're going, they've already got an agreement with Century to build all the homes here, and they're gonna build 300, 300 to 400,000 dollar homes, they're gonna be all nice, big homes here, so it's not gonna be a starter home type subdivision that you would see elsewhere. It's really kinda what Fairview is, in my opinion, has been looking for and asking for with something like this.
Yeah. Well, our, well, if we went to a standalone RS-15, like what Will was saying, so then all of a sudden, with good intent, you know, we may not get the same product.
Well, I don't, I don't know how we can guarantee that, all I can do is, we do have a contract, or Tony does have the contract with Century that I'm involved with, they're building the lots, and the houses that they're gonna build are nice, big homes, I do know that there's already a contract on all these lots, so it's not gonna, like I said, it's not gonna be a starter home type subdivision. They're gonna have a real nice big brick entrance coming there, and there off of Cox Road with, more than likely with a turn lane there, they're gonna do a really nice, our vision is to meet with the emergency access, the people, the fire department, stuff like that, on what type of crash gates they're wanting to see up there, but we're gonna fence all that off nice, what Tony's saying, and put some nice crash gates up there within the subdivision, with probably some brick monuments holding those up on each side, but the vision he's got there is to do a really nice upscale type subdivision here.
Did we get any formal notes back from the fire department from the staff meeting? I just remember at the staff meeting, they had a lot of questions about that entrance, that emergency access entrance.
I wouldn't say we got exactly formal notes, there was definitely a discussion that they wanted two access points, so.
Mr. Reed, if you don't mind me asking, why did, have y'all considered just coming in through Hall Lane instead of having a separate entrance?
Well, we originally did that, but this, this land where we're coming out of is their land, our vision was, in Tony's, is that come through something of ours, we're gonna decorate it nice, not to come through an existing older subdivision that probably more than likely doesn't want our traffic to come through in the first place. That was my thought, that's why we didn't extend it through ours, 'cause if I, if I lived there, I wouldn't want all my traffic to shoot through my, like, eight existing homes through there, so that was our vision there, plus we wanted to have a nice entrance that would come in to this subdivision, with monuments on each side, see, we wouldn't be able to do that on that Hall Road, 'cause it's not ours. That was our vision, and originally, we had those two roads coming in, but we didn't, we opted out of that because we didn't feel disturbing that subdivision or those residents.
It just seems that having those two roads so close together, and I believe the traffic study also...
Correct, that's why, that's why that left turn lane, I think, is gonna be so crucial in that area, that'll really clean up that for those two entrances right there now.
So the left turn lane would actually be accessible to both?
Yeah, yeah, we'd more than likely probably extend it a little bit further, so you'd have a full left turn lane to go into the both of those, yes, ma'am. That's why I keep thinking that's gonna be the best alternative, and we're assuming we gotta put one in anyhow, there.
Well, and you would almost have to do it all the way to, you know, to Cox Pike?
Yeah, 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 she's already, we've got the distances down, we've already surveyed it around the curve, so we already know.
The Cox?
Yes, ma'am, we've got, we've got it surveyed for the turn lane design and stuff. Actually, we just got the traffic report back, I think Friday, the revised one based on this layout of the 141 lots.
So there's only one entrance?
Well, there's, there's one entrance, and there's a second emergency entrance up there in that top, far right, where we have actually right-of-way, 30-foot right-of-way over to Lake Road, for, and we're, but we're gonna block it off, that's only our emergency, we don't want people going out through there, we want only emergency, if it's an emergency, you've got a second access where the fire department or whoever can go through that, but you're focusing straight out through the Cox Pike, we want everybody to funnel out through there where we're gonna have a nice safe left turn lanes and stuff like that to go out on.
So you don't want them going out on Lake Road, is that what?
Well, I mean...
Because on Cox Pike, it's gonna get real busy.
Yeah, Cox Pike, Cox Pike will have more traffic on it from that subdivision, yeah, so.
And that's pretty curvy.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, I mean, sure, the entrance exit is coming out on Cox Pike, but if anybody's gonna be living here and going to Nashville, they're gonna hop on 40, which means they're gonna gut through Lake Road anyway, so Lake Road's traffic's still gonna be...
Yeah, yeah, over there, through there, just not coming through those people's, yeah. And it's only, you know, not that we wouldn't go ahead and put something there, but it's a 30-foot right-of-way, it's not a right-of-way to put, I mean, if we could get, you know, if we could do something, that's what I was talking to Will about last week, is, but, you know, if I could get two-way traffic in there, and then we could work a deal out with those, those people somehow, I mean, I could.
To go into Lake Road?
Yeah.
Have you driven on Lake Road before?
Yeah.
It is a nightmare. There turns around, it's really windy, people drive straight down the center, very over the speed limit.
Believe me.
If you're gonna try to add in 141 homes to go in and out on the Lake Road, you're insane. It's my personal subjective opinion.
Well, that's why I've got it as a, as a emergency access, but... But, you know, the traffic report says it all. We have, we paid a, you know, a traffic engineer to do that study, and she's come up with the recommendations during that, per y'all's requirements.
If I may, uh, cuz I brought this up earlier, and I feel like it was kinda just thrown off to the side. Kristen, with, with number two, talking about improved open space, are regulations only require that for PUDs?
For improved open space, yes.
So, in a situation like this, where the only thing that's changing on this, what I'm looking at in paper, and what I'm looking at on my screen in PDF, is just the word that they put over there on the right-hand side. And one says PUD, one doesn't, other than that, the exact same things, like, it's the exact same thing. So why would we require improved open space on a PUD and then not turn around and require it here? Cuz what I'm feeling here is that we've got 141 new families that are coming in, and we're building a neighborhood, but we're not fostering community. So it's like breaking the spirit of the ordinance, does that make sense?
Sure.
I just don't feel comfortable doing that.
I mean, we do require open space, um, but not, not necessarily improved open space. I mean, the improved open space is specific to PUDs where we're, you know, giving a, essentially a variance to lot size, um, you know.
Yeah.
In, as, as a result of getting some sort of amenities, so.
Yeah, I mean, sure, we can call it open space all we want, but we've all experienced open space. It's not stuff that people like to go and hang out, and it's not something that fosters community. You know, people don't go and say, "Let's go hang out in the pond," like the, the retention pond or whatever. Like, that to me is not counted as open space, and it doesn't, it doesn't, eh, the, the spirit of it is like community. Does that make sense? Like, how can we sit here and build 141 homes here for families and not give them places to meet and connect?
What, what would you suggest, what's your vision on, on a, a, a vision of a subdivision that you're, that you're thinking of right now?
Yeah.
That 100 homes, whatever.
Good question, yeah.
What, what would you suggest?
Will, for improved open space for our city ordinance right now, what do we have as suggestions in our ordinance for?
Like multipurpose fields?
I'm thinking pavilions, parks, like places for people to just be. For 141 homes, can it be reasonable to expect, like, uh, what do they call those fancy things where people meet in a building and then?
A clubhouse?
A clubhouse, thank you, I've never had a clubhouse, so.
Though, you don't, you typically don't see something with clubhouses or swimming pools for something this smaller development. You're, you're, you're looking at 300 or 400 lots that justifies it, and then when you get into stuff like it, then you're creating HOAs that the, that the people don't like, to pay monthly fees for clubhouses and stuff like that.
Is there an HOA currently planned?
Well, there will be for maintenance of detention ponds and stuff like that, for mowing that. Uh, but when you get to, you know, swimming pools, pavilion, like a pavilion like he's talking about would be great. People can come and can congregate there, there's no large fee, you know, they're not maintained. I'm, I'm cool with if we, something like that, multipurpose fields where kids can go kick and play ball, areas like that, we've got plenty of room to do that here, so whatever you, I mean, I'm.
I'm just thinking, you can do a lot with five and a half acres.
Well, we've got 20 acres on this piece right here to do stuff. So that's, that's why I was asking you what, some suggestions that, I mean, I'm, if you wanna put it in the minutes for us to show that on there on the construction plans, I'm fine with that.
Any thoughts? I've spoken a lot.
I know, I, I agree, it needs to be some kind of, I like it if we're gonna do the multi-zoning. Yeah, I, I do think it needs to be a PUD. I'd like to see the recommendations that was given from the city staff and, but, I, you know, I have no particular, I know right now walking trails are big, you know, in a lot of communities. Don't know about just having a pavilion with nothing, you know, but it, it may work, something like that. I know we tried several times and didn't get there, did we? But we wanted multipurpose fields for the kids.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
But I would say any of those would be acceptable, you know.
So there's no, so we still can't do the, I'm just suggesting doing the R-15 with stating that we're gonna put that in there. I'd like to get away from the PUD.
If you put a pool.
No.
And a clubhouse.
Well, the problem is, is people that spend this type of money, they build their own pools. Well, you know, people that spend this money on these type of homes, they usually build their own pools on the lots. It's just not that, not that I, you know.
I just wanna see one, this is my neighborhood.
If we had more, if I could've got, you know, we could've got 200 lots in there, maybe we would have.
We've been talking about this for a long time.
Yeah, City of Fayetteville has a cool pool already that people aren't using enough, so.
It's on, but it's not working.
But I'm seeing what you're saying, multipurpose fields, walking trails, uh, stuff like that, or a pavilion.
Where kids can play, man, where, where if I had my little girl there, where she can go and swing, you know?
Hey, we, like I said, we got 20 acres, so we can do that, and, and you could do a little tot light in a multipurpose field, those are pretty easy, they're easy to maintain. Uh, you just mow around them, uh, the areas they're gonna have to maintain anyhow, so. That's the existing house that, that, we've already got somebody looking at, it actually mine, it's such, got a really cool barn that the guy, that the original owner that Tony's getting this from has got in the house, so they're fixing up the house real nice, and they're gonna put a fence around it and stuff and kinda section it off. But it's, it's, it's two acres, that lot. I mean, it's, it's nice, it's a nice, the barn, I would love to have the, not the barn, the shed or whatever it is. Oh, it's massive, yeah, I could.
And Ms. Reed, I guess at the end of the day, the question is, what, what do you want to rezone this to? You know, we can say, well, we'd prefer it to be a PUD, or what, it doesn't really matter.
Well, we, I, what, oh. What we'd like to do, I'd like to do like a R-15, R-20, and if I call it a PUD, or if we have to do a PUD, we'll do a, I mean, we'll do a PUD, but I'd like to do the, like I'm showing here, the R-15, R-20 lots, which all of them are above R-15, most of them are 17 or above 20. Uh, but if we do the, you know, the, the PUD, then it's just, you know, we have to.
But R-15 slash R-20 is not one of our zoning districts.
Correct, well, you got, yeah, I'd rather just do R-15 and say I'm gonna do exactly what you got sitting right, looking at you right there, majority of the lots are 20.
We do have a multi-use PUD that we already have. We can, we can do that, so we're not having to change anything besides go to a PUD. Now, if you wanna do RS-15, that's your prerogative to bring it in and see.
But you're saying R-20 PUD, what are you saying, R-15?
Whether we have a multi-use, a mixed.
A multi-use PUD?
Yes.
Is that what it's called, multi-use, is that what y'all?
Well, what is it called? Well, I've seen them before, it's called, um.
Well, I mean, it, it could be, you, you could have different areas of density within a single PUD, but there's, there's no reason to do that for this particular development because the density that's proposed is 1.27 units per acre. So the density of an R-20, R-20 would be, as shown on the plan, is 2.2 units per acre. So they're a whole unit less per acre than what R-20, the R-20 density would allow them to be. So there's no, there would, there would be no reason to have a split planned development zone district because the number of lots that's being requested falls within the R-20 density. Matter of fact, if there was such a thing, it would be the R-34 density as basically, uh, 1.27 units per acre equates to about 34,000 square feet. Now, that's not the average lot size, that's two different numbers, but that's the density. So you, you're having one lot per 34,000 square feet of gross area of the entire development. So, the, the, the density that's, that's being requested is not out of line whatsoever. And the lot sizes, um, being none that are less than 15,000 square feet are certainly not out of line from other planned developments that you've seen. It's just this, this challenge or this idea of trying to keep conventional zoning instead of the planned development, I think, is, is gonna prove to be a little difficult based on kind of what, what we have on our books, so.
So the, the question, I guess, if we have, on our agenda tonight, we have an, an R-20 PUD request. So how, is that what we, we vote on tonight?
I guess, Will, do I, do I understand it right? Can we do exactly what we got showing there with R-20 PUD? With the, with the variant setbacks and stuff?
Yes, what's, what's proposed before you tonight, in my opinion, would be in line with an R-20 PUD, with the exception of the improved open space. That's, that's, in my opinion, that's the only thing that's lacking from a, a planned development standpoint. That, that's, that's aside from the access issues. That's, that's a different, that has nothing to do with conventional zoning versus planned zoning. That's just, you need to decide how you wanna handle those access points. But the only, and Kristen, unless I'm missing something, the only, well, that and the, the design.
Booklet.
The, the, what I call a pattern book that kinda gives you a narrative of the building materials and, you know, maybe mailbox type and driveway, you know, all paved dri, or concrete driveway.
No more mailbox types, remember, they just changed all that.
Yeah.
I can't believe that.
That's a different discussion, but.
Efficiency.
Yeah, you're gonna have big mail kiosks in every subdivision now.
So with those two items, uh, aside, the, the improved open space and the narrative on the aesthetics of the development, uh, everything else, in my opinion, would be a suitable R-20 PUD proposal before you.
One concern I have is, I, I wanna make sure the project, the product that we're approving and voting for is what we actually have to look at and see the full product. I wanna see the improved open space on the documentation, I wanna see a pattern book so we can see kinda what this product's gonna look like. And, and Ms. Reed, I know in the past, you've provided those things on Otter Creek.
Yes, sir.
Roach Dell. And I still don't understand why that was named Roach Dell, but it's a whole separate discussion. But I wanna see those so I know exactly what we're voting for. That way, we don't lose anything in the transition from here to the Board of Commissioners. So what I would ask is that, also wanna see some specs on that emergency entrance, you know, how's that gonna be designed? I'd like, like that designed to go to the fire department so they can look at it, make sure it's approved to get their equipment across.
Okay, not a problem.
So to that end, what I would ask is that we defer this to the next meeting, that, so you can provide those things, as well as everything else that's on this list.
So that would be my motion.
If, if, just, you'll entertain me for a minute, on that emergency access, just so Mr. Reed can have some clarity on the direction he needs to go, are, are you desiring for it to be gated in that it would only be utilized in an emergency situation? The alternative would be that it be a paved public entrance and exit onto Lake Road. And if that's not desirable, then my preference would be to go ahead and make that known tonight, so we don't have to pursue that.
Very fair, and I do have concern that it only has one entrance because our current ordinances state that this is considered a cul-de-sac cuz it only has one entrance. And I know we've, we've discussed this before on different projects. I think the limit's 24 homes. I know we've given some variances for, I think, one that was 34 homes, 35 homes, but the design of it, it was, the road was one house deep, then it did a loop around, so the odds of blocking were very slim. Here.
But we're, we're limited too on that, Bert, if you look around it from previous approvals, there's no stub streets anywhere all the way around it.
I know, that's why.
Subdivisions are, you know.
And that's why, I guess the question would be, why not make that a road onto Lake Road? I know it's not the best road in the world, but it does give options to the homeowners that are there. It takes care of that issue. Not necessarily the best option, again, but it may be the only real option.
What's the dreadors of y'all? I mean, I, I was trying to limit access out that Lake Road, but, I mean, I'll do whatever the.
What, what if, and I know we're limited there cuz it necks down a little bit, Jamie, uh, there on the south end of lots 112 and lot number one, but is there an opportunity to, to make that entrance road, at least to that first cross intersection, as wide as possible? So maybe have a pavement width of 30 feet instead of 24?
Yeah, you're talking, you're talking about between lot one and lot 112?
I'm talking about from Cox Pike all the way to that first intersection.
Yeah.
So that if there was some type of blockage, we've at least got some, some extra width on that, that section.
Yeah.
In addition to the gated emergency access that would go to Lake Road.
Yeah.
That might be a decent compromise to allow some passage of emergency vehicles if there happened to be something there.
Okay.
And it, it's not necessarily just emergency vehicles, the problem is.
Sure, sure.
If you have emergency vehicles that are there, a fire truck that's blocking it, you've got half subdivision that can't get in or out.
Right.
And those are gonna be very unhappy people that are gonna be making some phone calls to me. So I'd like to figure that out.
And, and this, in, in that regard, this is somewhat unique in that there aren't any new lots being proposed on that stretch of road. So the likelihood of two emergency vehicles being parked side by side and completely blocking, you know, any through traffic might be lessened since there aren't any new lots on that, that bottleneck area, if you will.
And I like that idea of having the wider road there.
No, we can, we're still gonna do a, an emergency access to. You got a 30-foot right of way, so we, we're gonna be limited on to the width of the pavement that we can actually put in there and work with.
Callie, it, it could be done if that was your desire, but I, my impression is there's a mix, some mixed feelings on, on the commission on whether or not that should be. Good, yeah. With 30 feet, you could probably get, um, two 11-foot lanes, which is not uncommon. I don't know that you would get curb and gutter because there, there may be some, some drainage issues that, that are presented if it's curbed. But you could do maybe two-foot shoulders, two 11-foot lanes and two-foot shoulders on each side uh, to get to, what is that, 26 feet? And have two feet on either side of the 30-foot right of way.
Yeah, it may just be 22 feet with ditches on each side cuz that'd give us, it'd give us four feet to put a, a small swell on each side to drain it out to, to Lake Road or into our subdivision.
It certainly would not be capable of supporting your, your city street standard of 12-foot lanes, two-and-a-half-foot curb and gutter, planting strip, and a five-foot sidewalk. There, there's just not enough right of way there to do that.
Sam?
I, um, but I do have some concerns, like Mr. Jenkins was saying, that, um, Lake Road is curvy, and where that's gonna come out, it, it will be dangerous. And then knowing, not knowing what houses or what kinda space, I mean, that would all be stuff that, um, you know, that would matter in the decision, um, process. And do you happen to know exactly on that access road, how close the homes are? Like, to what you're proposing, where to come out on Lake Road?
You, you mean how close the, the houses are to that right of way?
Yeah.
The one to the north there, that Bernice property, is that right, Bernice? Bernice property, I think hers is further away, but that lot eight, just below that, there's, there's a house kinda close to it, and I don't know the exact dimension. You know, I would probably say 30 feet, something like that.
So really quick, we did have a motion for deferment by Mr. Burks, if we wanna get a second. A second from Callie, so continue discussion, just wanna make sure we captured that.
With the motion to defer right now, under what conditions? Like, what are we expecting? Can we get clear on that? Cuz we've had a lot of discussion.
I've, I've written down pattern book, specs on the emergency access, the 30-foot pavement up front, uh, coming onto Cox Pike, and then adding a multipurpose field slash walking trails, trying to define, uh, uh, the amenity package for the open space. And then we're, what I've got, we're still stuck with, you know, how you wanna do the access drive. Do we, do we only want to, about emergency access? And keep all this wide up front, or do you want it to have some type of two-way traffic back there?
So the, the motion to defer was, was with the staff notes staying at the R-20 PUD, the, the wider front entry, and then we need to determine. Cuz we, the staff notes request additional criteria and information for the emergency access road, so we can complete that discussion of do we wanna keep it emergency access only, or do we wanna be a through street?
Just occurred to me, um, Callie was, was indicating, you know, that it's not always, what we see today's not always gonna be what's in place. That's true for this. Callie was, was indicating, you know, that it's not always, what we see today is not always gonna be what's in place. That's true for this location and any other location. So it might be prudent to go ahead and request, Jamie, that, that your dedication be fifty feet wide? And so then, if in the future, we, you did want to construct a, a true city cross-section street, then you would obtain an, an additional twenty feet from the existing right-of-way that's, that's there. And then that way, we don't have to try to go back and squeeze in another twenty feet next to lot twenty-eight or something. I, I think there's, I think you've got enough room to kind of shift some of those.
I'll push that, I'll put it to lot twenty-eight and all them up north, or further up, I think it's north.
Because I, I do have concerns about the condition of Lake Road, and then in addition to that thirty-foot width of right-of-way, what, what kind of impact that might have if we just opened it up directly without indicating or preventing some level of public use by way of an emergency access. But at least we've provided a provision in the future to make a, a true street connection to Lake Road if, if that was desirable, you know, by the fathers that be.
Just throwing this out there as an idea, on Hall Lane, where lot three is currently, there's, there's a gate right there. That's the original entrance to the, to the original property, correct? If I remember. Yeah, that's the original, okay. Why wouldn't we be able to, let's say, eliminate lot three in that situation and leave that as your emergency access point? So you don't have to worry about Lake Road at all.
Well, then, yeah, but I originally had that, but we, we wanted, like I said before, we wanted to eliminate any type of traffic that would go through the, the Hall Lane area.
Like I said, no, for emergency is what I'm saying now.
You're trying to create an access point farther back in the neighborhood to prevent.
Yeah, but you're just right next to it. I think the thirty feet that Will suggested would be a whole lot better than, than throwing, going through those gates because you'll be able to drive, if, even if somebody blocked that, you'll be able to go around it. And plus, there's no, not gonna be any homes built. You can be, go in and out of the, the landscape trees and the grass if you had to go around out front here, all the way out to Cox Pike.
Well, the main entrance actually was, they may had an access also, but it was this strip of land.
Yeah.
Right, well, was part of it that they operate, maybe they did go in Hall, but one of the things, one of the things that I keep thinking is you're gonna build four-hundred-thousand-dollar homes and then have a back access just for drive-through traffic. I'm not so sure the neighborhood wants it. So maybe we would be better off to have, you know, emergency exit for right now because, you know, it is what it is, because then all of a sudden you're taking people cutting through their neighborhood, and so it kind of goes both ways.
Well, what are you saying, Mayor?
Well, I'm just talking, it's really, you don't have to know. Now, I, no, I'm just saying, it goes both ways. That, so the people that buy into your neighborhood may not really want acts, people just driving through Lake, from Lake Road to, you know, come in. Right, and I, I, that's what I'm leaning towards because there was other conversation, and I was just saying, it just dawned on me, you know, we're acting like that they're probably not gonna want drive-through traffic in their neighborhood.
No, and, and usually.
With kids playing and.
Yeah, they usually have less theft and stuff without multiple access points too, and especially with, you know, more expensive type homes and stuff. But anyhow, whatever the boards Drether's are. Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And, and I'm assuming that's still what I'm, I'm gonna meet with the, the fire department, emergency people on the type and specs on that still before the next meeting, get that stuff for y'all.
And that would be a paved emergency access.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Paved all the way out to that.
I know the other day, somebody, we was in a meeting, and somebody said, well, you could just put a gravel in there if it's just.
No, this, this will be all paved because you won't be able to get fire trucks and stuff in there. We don't want them to get stuck and stuff like that. But like Will's revised it, and he's correct. We can do fifty feet on my side, then I can do curb and gutter all the way up to my, close to the, the property line, and then we'll just do that smaller paved section all the way out between those two lots. And that would work good. You know, that's, and at some point, when Lake Road gets wide, and then you could acquire that further out.
Will just make sure Mr. Anderson talked to that mic for me.
Bad habit. Can we make sure one more time? He's gonna be requested to stay with his drawing other than these modifications, and we're gonna classify it as an R twenty?
PUD.
PUD, okay.
And then I'm gonna bring a pattern book back in this next time to submit to y'all, basically show you the, the houses and stuff like that, correct?
Improved open space.
Yeah.
And you did say brick four sides.
Oh, it's good, yeah, oh, yeah, be nice. You know, sentries, you know, I've already seen the products and stuff that they're putting. It's, yeah, it's gonna be nice. And I think that's what we've talked about with Mayor, with, with y'all's vision, or to see some nicer type of stuff like that, so.
And Mr. Reed, if I can suggest, I know Mr. Jenkins was talking about maybe a pavilion, and let's not confuse that with a gazebo that holds four people. I don't think that's the spirit of what he's looking at. Because I have seen the, the spec book from some of the other ones that has the, the gazebo and that sad little tot lot. It's the same in everyone.
We got those.
Let me just go ahead and throw that out there.
You don't want a tot lot?
I'm okay with a tot lot. I'm just saying, we, I know I've seen the gazebo that always goes with it, that's, sits like four people.
I got you.
Probably something a little more substantial for it, with Mr. Jenkins concerned of having a community sponsor maybe congregate, something.
I got you.
A little bit bigger.
I'll try to look at how we can loop the walking trails in there to the multipurpose field and figure out where we can get. I'll get with Tony and figure out, you know, pavilion, tot lot type stuff where we can massage that stuff in there for y'all for the next one.
Kind of get a quasi clubhouse in your area. I mean, without the expense of having a clubhouse, because I know that is expensive.
Oh, yeah, and it's maintain, maintenance nightmare.
Any additional discussion before I call the vote?
Yeah, I, I got something personal, though. I'm sorry for questioning your sanity earlier, talking about Lake Road. That was inappropriate. My adrenaline was pumping and I.
What happened, what did I say?
Whenever I said wanting to put an access road, you know, out there onto Lake Road, that place is crazy. And I, I said that, and I'm sorry, that wasn't kind.
Okay, so we will call the vote for the deferment. You good? You got anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll see you next month.
When do I, Christian, when do I, y'all, when, when, when do I need to have that back for y'all, the pattern book and stuff, before then, for y'all can review for the next meeting? What date is that?
Yep. Yeah, that's right. All right, for, for the next item of business, I'm gonna hand it to Mr. Jenkins. I'm gonna accuse myself.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to item four, recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on a proposed plan of services to accompany resolution thirty-two TAC eight, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Fairview by owner consent, Cheryl Bates, and approving a plan of services at seventy-three forty-four Taylor Road. That's tax map zero four two parcel seventy-seven dot zero one. Mr. Power, would you mind reading the staff comments there for me?
Owner developer. The owner developer is requesting that this point nine-two acre parcel be annexed into the city limits for the purpose of construction in one single family house.
Thank you, sir. And do we have a representative for this item? No? Okay. All right. Yeah, open discussion.
My understanding is Mr. Butler's wanting to annex this in so he can build himself, his home for him and his family to live in, so, which is why he's stepped out. And this was approved by the Board of Commissioners, so. To that effect, I'd make a motion to approve.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Mr. Butler, you can return.
Yeah, I thought I had it by the library.
All right, thank you, guys. Sorry about that. All right, we'll move into bonds and letters of credit. Item five, Fairview Station, phase one, irrevocable letter of credit in the amount of three hundred thousand to cover roads, sidewalks, storm drainage and other improvements specified by the approved plans. Letter of credit will expire October thirteenth, twenty eighteen. Any update from staff on that one? Or same? Nothing's changed. It hadn't been renewed or anything?
Yeah. Yeah. Based on observations made this afternoon, I would recommend allowing a reduction in the renewed bond to be in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I, I've got a question first.
Sir?
I don't see where it says that we're reduced. They've asked to reduce this, so I guess I'm a little confused while we are. I mean, just on my agenda, it's not saying that they're asking to reduce it.
It's coming up for expiration and when, and, and actually, they're getting ready to, to do the final topping, so it can be, it can be at the discretion of the, of the commission to reduce it down to, to make it a more appropriate amount to reflect what's left, so.
I would move to reduce the irrevocable letter of credit to the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars based upon the city engineers' recommendations.
I'll second the motion. First and a second, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item six, Deer Valley Downs, phase three, performance bond in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand to cover roads, sidewalks, storm drainage and other improvements specified by the approved plans. Bond will expire October thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
Same situation, made observation assessment this afternoon, and the phase three, along with one and two, appear to be complete and would recommend that you consider moving this particular bond and making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for acceptance of this infrastructure improvements and converting, or allowing the conversion of the bond to a maintenance bond, a one-year maintenance bond in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five? Were we one hundred and twenty-five?
Twenty-five thousand. Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Will, can I ask a question? Were these storm drains, do we have easements for the city on these storm drains?
Yes, the recorded plats have easements for those.
Just want to make sure I know in the past, that's not always been the case, which creates problems if we need to get in there to repair. Okay, good.
Any, any plans that I review, I, I, that's one of the things I look at, is to make sure that there's easements recorded on the plat for not only the pipes that are discharging generally the storm water from the streets, but also the path after being discharged from the pipe, you know, where, where it goes within a ditch line, and make sure that ditch line's in an easement. So the city does have the opportunity to go in and clear obstructions if that becomes necessary. It's not your obligation to, but you have the ability to without seeking any further, I guess, approval from landowner.
So this would prevent the issue we're having with Western Woods right now? As far as access?
The, 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 yes, in general.
Perfect, thank you. I'd make a motion that we allow for a twenty-five thousand dollar one-year maintenance bond, is that correct, Will? Per the city engineer's recommendation.
Motion's there, second? Second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, Cumberland Estates, phase two, performance bond in the amount of nine hundred and ninety thousand to cover roads, sidewalks, storm drainage and other improvements specified by the approved plans. Developers requesting a reduction in the bond amount.
Based on site observations made this afternoon and the improvements that have been installed to date, and the remaining improvements that are left, which primarily consist of the asphalt surface, sidewalks, street trees, and some relatively minor grading compared to the mass grading that, that took place on the site, I would recommend a reduction in to an amount, a bond amount of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Four thirty-nine?
Four thirty-nine, yes, sir. That works.
Mr. Owen, have they repaired that, where their two ponds were flipped, where the larger one was high, the lower one was low?
Mr. Butler, I have, I have heard third-hand about that, but I have not been contacted directly about what that issue might be, and I have not assessed that issue. So I'd be glad to take a look at that, but I'm not intimately. What I have heard happened, if that makes sense.
It might, I don't know if it might behoove us or be beneficial to try and clear that up, to see where they stand with their notice of violation with TDEC on, you know, to see if it's gonna be something that we're gonna undertake, or, I don't know if it's proper.
I, I, I think I'm correct stating that the ponds in question are in phase one. So I don't know that this particularly has a, a direct.
Have we already reduced phase one?
Link to it. I would have to go and look. I'm not certain.
Okay. I also have a question as to whether or not they have the appropriate, appropriate silt fences up, rip, wrap all that fine erosion control, because that's been an issue. And I would like that to be reviewed before we release this, to make sure that's all taken care of. So to that end, I would ask to defer this to the next meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion for deferment and a second. Any additional discussion?
And then will we figure out the pond thing maybe at that point? If the, should we add that to it? Or is it not gonna be in this section? Did we determine?
If we could just review that too, if that's possible, just so for, to stay to mind.
So specifically, Mr. Burks, you're looking for staff to.
I want to make sure all the erosion controls are in place now, that are supposed to be there, as well as these ponds, because phase two, I assume, is draining off into these ponds as well. So that does affect it, so let's make sure that's also taken care of.
Generally, I'm not certain that the city conducts inspections of the erosion control, since that is a state permit. But we can, we can touch base on that, so we'll figure something out.
Sounds good.
Yes, we can do that. We can certainly follow up with TDEC personnel to see where they stand as far as the notice of violation. And that may be a better approach than us to go out and conduct our own inspections.
See their status.
So since our resources are limited, so is the state's, but we'll see, we'll see if they followed up, touch base with TDEC, and see, see if they've adequately addressed the NOV issues.
Sir.
This is the same builder that done widely circled, and they seem to have a lot of interaction with TDEC. I, I, I mean, they're on a first-name basis with them pretty much.
Any additional discussion? So we have a motion for deferment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, request a set bond amount, Pepper Tree Cove, phase two.
This was a, a final plat, I think, that was approved several months ago. I want to say early summer, late spring. It included six lots that were basically on the back end of phase one. And it did not, it did not involve any new infrastructure that wasn't shown on phase one. So all the roadway frontage and the utilities for these six lots was installed or a part of the bonding for the first phase. So I think we're okay in moving forward with signing that.
So, I think we're okay in moving forward with signing that plat since those improvements are covered under the Phase One bonding. So, I would recommend no bond be required for this.
Should we take action on that as no bond, or no action needed? Okay. Anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to set the bond at zero based upon the city engineer's recommendation.
First and a second, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, request to set bond amount Subway Restaurant.
Subway Restaurant Site Stabilization Bond would be recommended to set at the amount of forty thousand dollars. Since we do have several new members on the planning commission, I'll give my spiel again about bonds, particularly site bonds. Private developments for, that have improvements that will remain private, like a commercial site, we do not bond, the city does not bond in an amount that would guarantee the performance or the installation of those approved improvements. The only thing we are bonding is if that development during construction was abandoned to any degree, we would have some coverage to go in and stabilize that site so that it's not affecting the adjacent roadways or adjacent property owners with runoff or any other items that might negatively affect adjacent properties. So, that's why that, the forty thousand amount, again, does not represent the value or the amount to build the subway that's been proposed and approved. So, just wanted to clarify that.
Sir? Like to make a motion?
Make a motion to set a site reclamation bond. I don't think I set that right. At forty thousand dollars per the city engineer's recommendation.
Additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, request to set bond amount Dollar General Retail Store.
These, the two items, nine and ten, are very similar in their scope from a size and grading standpoint. So, I would also recommend an amount of forty thousand dollars for the Dollar General site.
Make a motion to set a site reclamation bond of forty thousand dollars per the city engineer's recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
First and a second, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We'll move to reports for discussion information. City Planner, Ms. Kessanza? Thank you, thank you. City Engineer, Mr. Owen?
I have nothing further.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney, Mr. Potter? Thank you, sir. Communication from the Planning Commission Members, Ms. Lauder?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Walls? Mr. Anderson? Mr. Power? Ms. Cali? Commissioner Burks?
I would just like to thank our city planner for putting together information about the sidewalks that we spoke about. I know we also talked about putting together some kind of storm water plan. Whenever that gets done, if you'll let me know, I'd like to discuss it with you. Other than that, I apologize for missing the workshop. I had something else going on. But that's all I have, thank you.
Sir, Mayor Carol?
Well, yes, I have something to say tonight. This is actually my last night on the planning commission. So, soon as I, you know, finished my term as mayor, my seat was connected to my term as mayor. So, y'all will get a new, or you may have additional, get to select additional person, however the election turns out. But I just wanted to take a second and just thank everybody. I've really enjoyed working with y'all. You came in and you were all new at once. And I knew that was going to be a hard place to be for this city. But, you know, I've really worked hard trying to learn as quick as possible and love that you're asking questions and you're getting to be a part of redoing some of the regs and stuff like that. So, I've enjoyed my time with you. To Brandon, we've served quite some time together. And I just appreciate your leadership to the community and stepping up and taking on this position. To Will. Will has taught me a whole lot, whether he wanted to or not. And some of it was live in the meetings now. But I really appreciate everything you've done and just what you've done for the city. And I've enjoyed working with you and just, you know, can't say enough. You've always kept us focused on the right things and tried to, in very difficult times, not let us get lost. And when we had some changes and turnover, you know, you were a constant that was around for a long time and could help us, guide us, and so city staff. And then Sharon, I'm going to miss y'all. It's just been my pleasure of working with you. And then, Mr. Hall's in the back, but we served for a long time on the planning commission. And just love the city. What you're doing is the most important job in the city. Whether you realize it or not, you are the ones, you're taking the citizens' visions, your visions, and trying to carry it forward. And so, as we get this comprehensive plan, you're going to have the job to make sure that we're following these lovely guidelines that we set forth. And so, just be true to your conviction and your heart and what you want to see out of the future of Fairview. Because it is so easy to, as we've seen in our community, to change the direction. And so, just be a visionary. Think about the future and what we want it to look like. And so, keep up the good work, and I've enjoyed every moment.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jenkins?
Well, no, I can't follow that. No, and because it is your last time, and some people might hold us against you, but you're the reason why I'm even serving on any stuff in the city, anyway. So, thank you for that, thank you for your encouragement to take someone who knew absolutely nothing about politics at all and encouraging me to be involved, even if it was a beer board, which no longer exists. Other than that, nothing here. Show up on the fifteenth, seriously. I know there aren't a whole lot of people in here, but please, show up. Invite a friend, like, schedule a party afterwards so that you guys can all talk about stuff that happened at the thing. Just get the community involved, please. This is, this is your community, like, own it. That's all.
Sir? Mayor Carol, I wasn't prepared for goodbye. I didn't realize that this was...
Well, it just dawned on me.
This was our last evening, but thank you very much for your commitment, always to serve the citizens, for helping me acclimate to this, to this board when I joined. I think there was a time when you had three or four meetings a week, you know, every night, your tree board and park board and planning commission. And thank you for all your service and all your help up here, and we will certainly miss you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.